We are going to call it to order. The school board meeting for Tuesday, May 16th is called to order 6:01 PM. Mr. Farlinger is not able to be with us this evening. The rest of us are here, so let's stand and say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we have a couple of changes to the agenda. You'll notice most of them are highlighted in yellow. However, under number seven, we're adding an additional recognition of good things, and that's a thank you to the music department for the spring concerts. So that's an extra bullet point there. And then when we go down to number nine, consent agenda, under E fundraisers, we're going to add girls' basketball grilling fundraiser during the Leroy Summer Fest. Under personnel, A, we're going to add head junior high coach for girls' basketball. Head junior high coach Amanda Sisco. And then under discussions and actions, letter E, approval of land acquisition by Minnut. Okay? So those things are added. Does anybody have any other changes to the agenda? Okay, I take a motion for the changes to the agenda.
I move we approve the changes to the agenda.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So now we will approve the agenda. I'll accept a motion for the approval of the agenda.
I make a motion we approve the agenda.
My second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. Do we have any public input tonight? No? All right. So then we're going to go to number seven, recognition and good things happening. Congratulations to the following retirees, Jody Luning, Trudy Nah, and Eileen Boynia. We have been very lucky that you chose to serve at Leroy Ostrander School, and we thank you for your dedication to our students and to our school. Thank you very much. Next, we have congratulations to Carrie Olson. She received her master's degree in mathematics from UNI this month. Very proud of her. Next, we have a thank you to Axel Gumbel for all the articles, the videos, and the spotlights that he puts on for the Leroy Ostrander Schools. We appreciate you, Axel. And thank you to the music department, Mrs. Gooddale, and the students K through 12 for the wonderful spring concerts. All right. Reports, student representative report, that's you.
So, there's been a ton of field trips last week, and there's another one tomorrow, career fair at SMEC. The spring concerts were yesterday and last week. Senior boards are today and tomorrow. Seniors' last day is Friday, and graduations next week. And this community service day is Friday, and spring sports are ending.
Okay, thank you very much. Not staff report tonight, so we're going to move right on to the principals' report.
Okay, there are a bunch of handouts I put in front of you. Before I get into that, though, I just want to mention on Carrie Olson, when she gets her master's degree, now we're able to offer her upper-level math classes. Now that our students can get college credit for them.
Great.
So that's what I've heard for she can teach those right here. So that's a, she's been working with RCTC, so that's where we get those credits from. So that's another bonus for getting the masters too, so.
Great.
Just want to throw that in there. All right, so let's start out with the standard reunification method. Looks like this should be in front of you. This is our Alice Drill. We had our Alice Drill on Friday. We invited the local EMTs and local fire, and Mott County Sheriff's Department, and the city of Leroy. So everybody was involved. So what we do, that would be an active shooter, where we evacuate the building and get everybody down to the fire hall. What this reunification method is, this talks, this, all the teachers have this. What this talks about is what our process is. If there ever was a real emergency, like you can see on the second page where it has the, kind of the flow chart, this talks about what all the teachers would do. So if we were ever down at the fire hall and there was, we're down there for a long period of time, everybody has responsibility and a thing like that. So the command center would be set up at the community center. That's where Jen and the office staff would go to set up any sort of communication process and things through there. So that, and then on the backside of that, it talks about the responsibilities of each of the departments over there. And then the last page is, this is how parents would sign their kids out. We talked about they'd have to go, right on top, they'd have to go to the community center where Leanna and Nikki would be. They would have to get this approved by them, so it's the right person to pick up. And they'd have to take the bottom part, take that down to the fire hall, and check the students out. So it is a process. I know in an emergency, it might not be how people want to do those things and just run down there, but we really do have a process in place if something happens. So just kind of want to let you guys know, since we ran one recently, that we do have this in place and the teachers are trained on it. So, any questions on our Alice Drill? Second one, let's look at our hiring protocols and practices. We have not visited this for many years. We've been using it, but there has been tweaks along the way, but I wanted to make sure we have this in writing. So I met with my leadership team, site team, whatever you want to call them, a couple weeks ago, and we really went through this to make sure if there was any things that we had changed over the years or things we needed to add. Looking at the front page, talks about the position, the posting, and really the timeline talks about licensed, certified, two weeks plus it could be posted. However, if we do get a tier three or four that is fully credentialed in this day and age, we could be interviewing them immediately. Non-licensed certified, 60 days posted, internal, external, non-certified, two weeks plus. Once again, if they're fully credentialed, we could interview immediately. Then we follow any contract language on that. Kind of goes through that, the other priority down there where it says priority, we would do infield licensures first, tier three or four, out-of-field placement, and then all others if no one had the proper licensure. We do follow the MDE laws, talking about interviewing, reference checks, things of that nature. You turn the page, talks a little bit about, a little bit the hiring practices and procedures, and it gives you definitions of the internal candidates, long-term subs, external candidates, internal postings, interview committee, kind of defined what those would be. Then moving on, it talks about applicants, what they need to hand in to be interviewed, steps for reviewing the candidates, and paperwork, what takes place during the interviews, the reference checking, the selection, interview philosophy as you read through this, and then interviewing protocols and reminders for everybody. And then there's an interview sign-off team. So it's, they understand the fair, just, and equitable, things along those lines, they sign that off, and then when we find interview approval, we technically only need one of those two forms, but we do have both in there for using those. Something we left in there we have not needed to use, we used to, believe it or not, get maybe 10, 12 applicants way back in the day. So we did create this rubric, and we put a lot of time into it to really take out any objectivity or subjectivity really of, if you had, didn't want to interview 12, and you want to narrow it down to, say, five or six, this would be the rubric that all the interview committee people would come on and look at, just, just the paper, just the application and the resume, fill out this rubric, and that's how you would narrow it down to. We just left it in there. Hopefully, maybe someday again we go back to those things, but it worked well when we did that, so we left that in there. And then the reference questionnaire that we will call. So just something if you guys want to look at, if you come up with questions throughout this, but I wanted to get it updated moving forward, make sure the, my site team or leadership team, if they have any questions or concerns how things were ran, I just want to share that with you guys, so.
For the new people, how many are on your hiring committee? And who does, I'm not looking for names, but who is on this, on the committee? As far as, you know, you, so many teachers, so many, whatever.
Well, really, I send out an email to everybody. I don't limit it, because I don't get hardly anybody that will sit on, to be honest with you. What I do try to do is make sure that it is relevant, and it says that in there, relevant to the position. So let's say we're looking for a third grade teacher. I want to, I want to make sure the second and fourth grade teacher are my first choices because they work with third, otherwise elementary staff, but then I expand it to pretty much anybody that wants to be on it. Trevor sits on a lot of them, just because, kind of neutral being in the student service center. I've had high school staff, elementary staff, I've had secretaries, I've had.
Becky.
Becky sat on them. Really, I sent out.
Four or five people.
I tried to get about four or five. And believe it or not, it's really hard to get four or five. I know we really enjoy sitting on interview committees, but I really try to keep it, I really try to keep it relevant to the position. You know, if we have an elementary, it doesn't make any sense to have the, you know, two high school teachers. So most of the time, if I, I do offer to everybody, but really comes down, usually I have to end up asking them, and usually for the best part, we get who's relevant. So I want to have at least three other than myself. Five, six is ideal, really, so. But, any other questions on that? I'm, my next thing is a licensure, so I'll move into that if you have any questions. So licensure, this little sheet like this, okay? I'm, I want to touch base on this because we do have two teachers working their way up the tier system. So I just wanted to go through what it takes, you know, over the years it's changed. It used to be, it wasn't tiers, it was community expert, it was variances, it was all these different things. Now they've gone to a tier system. So in order to get a tier one license, you need a bachelor's degree. So you get a bachelor's degree, and you can get your tier one. And in order to renew your, you can get three tier ones, but in order to renew your tier one, you need to attempt the MTLEs in the content area. You don't need to pass it, you just need to attempt it. Okay? Does that make sense? So anybody, so they could sit at tier one for three years. Okay? But if you're looking at tier two, the requirements for tier two is a bachelor's degree, and I'm going to skip down, I'll come back, and I'm going to skip.
So Erin, just one question. So the tier one, would that have been like the old variance, where they could have been on the variance for three years?
Uh, that would have been a community expert. I would, I would put more of it community expert.
I think they're all.
A variance is more like that out-of-field, maybe placement now, and.
Oh, that's probably true, yes. That would make sense, yes.
So that'd be more of your community expert. I, it's kind of how, I would send in tier two and maybe move into more of your variance type of thing.
Okay.
So, so tier two is a bachelor's degree, and there's a whole bunch underneath. But what I just want to, if, skip down to the, one to the third or, or the second or, two years teaching experience in subject area. So if you sit on tier one for two years, you can apply for a tier two after your second year. Does that make sense? So otherwise, you need, otherwise you could have enrollment in a teaching program, or master's degree in that subject, or complete teacher training, eight upper-level courses, training in subject, two years teaching, or pass a state test in the subject area. So that's how you get tier two, and you can do that for two years. Okay? So then to go on to tier three, bachelor's degree, and now you need to pass those tests. So not only take them, but you need to pass them. And any of the following. So you could technically get your tier three, once again, without going into an approved teacher training program, because you'd have three years of teaching experience at tier two without being placed on an improvement plan. But by that time, we would like them, obviously, the sooner we can get anybody enrolled in a course and have them licensed in the teaching from a teaching program is obviously our main goal. So they could get the tier through, tier three technically without actually going back to school, but in order to go to tier four, let me go back to tier three, but once again, you run out of tier threes. So eventually, if you don't go back to school, you're eventually going to run out of these if you, if you don't enroll. Does that make sense? And then tier four, you have your teaching license from a program. So, does that kind of make a little bit sense of, I know sometimes a teaching licensure is, is confusing on this, but this was the best I could find, that kind of gave, where, kind of what we were thinking, if we have some teachers that will be coming up on this.
So once you're a tier four, Erin, you know, down here at the bottom, it says it can be renewed every five years. Do you have to, like, retest or anything after five years? Or do you just apply?
No, you need to take, you'd see 125 continuing credits, and those are like, when we do staff development, or we do, go to conferences, or anything like that, you get so many credits per hour. So over that five years, you have to collect 125 of them, and then we submit them. And then I think, and then they always have, you know, some sort of competency, like, now there's like mental illness or different things like that, you have to take certain things, but they have ways to take them pretty easily, so. A lot of our staff development, especially when you do a consortium-wide, we try to have some of the options are license renewal options there, so everybody could take them at that time. So, and then of course, pay. Of course, you got to give them some money. So, but yes. Any other questions? Hopefully that helped, and kind of I want to make sure these are the things we've been working on lately, so made sense to show you guys. That is it. I just didn't want to give you guys too much today, so.
We have a PowerPoint later. Yes, they'll get sick of us anyway.
Hopefully that's, that's all I got, so.
All right. Thanks.
Yep.
Superintendent?
All right, folks, I don't have a whole lot in terms of this presentation, but I will in the strategic plan, so bear with me here. But I want to share a couple of things. Tomorrow, 14 juniors and 11 sophomores are going to be heading over to SMEC for their career expo, so that's kind of part of our, our big initiative with the student services department. A couple friendly reminders, and I will get this out-tuned an email on Friday, but senior awards night is Sunday, May 21st. Senior grades are due on Monday, May 22nd. Not that you need to know that, but it does relate to the scholarship selection committee meeting, which is Tuesday night, May 23rd. Also, senior breakfast is Friday, May 26th. Right after that breakfast is the graduation practice, if you can believe that. Where did the year go? And then, of course, a formal invite to all of you. Graduation is May 26th at 7:00 PM in our, or on our football field, so hopefully you all can attend. Friendly reminder too, we are starting our building and grounds projects, so be careful of any work zones across the district. Also, with the change in business management, I'm kind of, I want to do some research for all of you and do some digging and diving, so I'm going to reach out to a few of my contacts at other outlets besides CLA, just to see where they would potentially fit with us. Love CLA, that's not the issue, but, you know, we got to think of us first and our monies and all that. Probably going to put a posting out there as well, just to see if there are some individual business managers out there we can look at too. So don't be alarmed by anything, by anything, it's just, I'm just doing some data diving is all I'm doing, but I'll keep you posted on what I find with all of that. So kind of be prepared for that. Couple fun things, and you'll get this later on, probably this summer, but Mr. Carrier and Mr. Hungerhold are already on this, but sure enough, football homecoming next year will be September 22nd. Parents' night is October 6th, and senior night is October 13th. Volleyball, parents' night is September 28th, and senior night is October 16th, but we'll be sure to get that information out to you. We did wrap up our video series with Axel here in May, and then we hope to, starting next year, get our faces off the screen and get more staff or school board members on the screen. We have been pressuring Axel to get you guys on the screen and other people.
And break the camera.
So if you get a contact line, please say yes. So anyway, but yes, that's our last series for this year. We'll probably start again in late July, though, we'll take June off. Start again in late July, but hopefully other people will, will join us. Let's see here, I think that's it for tonight for me, but you will be getting an email from me with other little details going forward, you know, in my, in my weekly email to you coming Friday. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so we are going to move to the consent agenda. We have a lot on there, so we're going to kind of walk our way through. The approval of the April 18th regular meeting minutes, hope you all had a chance to read through those. Then the treasures reports, may bills and wires, treasures report, budget summary, student activity funds. I looked through all of those. Cass helped me figure out a couple of things, and so I didn't see any other flags, if you're all good with that. So under C, fundraisers, that's a, it hasn't E there, but.
Did it again?
I know. We're going to call it C.
Supposed to be automatic.
Yeah, right, it's, we're going to call it a C. So the football and volleyball stencil fundraiser, that's always a favorite. The football and volleyball Deer Creek Speedway 50-50 fundraiser. The football SNAP raise fundraiser, I'm not familiar with what that is, but.
It's kind of like a GoFundMe page.
Okay.
And a lot of schools are doing it not only for classroom supplies, but also athletic stuff.
Okay.
So you kind of put your name out there, your school, your institution, whatever it may be, and it's, it's like a GoFundMe, so anybody.
It's called a SNAP?
Yeah.
Okay.
So anybody can just donate some money to you.
Okay. And then the girls' basketball is going to do a grilling fundraiser during Leroy Summer Fest. Under personnel, we have the approval of hiring the fall and winter coaches for the school year 23-24, and the salaries are, what they're, how they're listed here, it's the current contract, but there will be a negotiation coming up, and so that will, could possibly change with the negotiation. But what's listed here is what's current. So girls' basketball, head coach Kelly Masters, and head, we added on one, the head junior high coach, Amanda Sisco. And then under boys' basketball, we have the head coach, Ryan Evans, head junior varsity coach, Erin Hungerhold, head junior high coach, Lindsay Milks, and assistant junior high coach, Steve Obern. One-act play head coach, Kristy Schuman. And for cheerleading in the fall, we have head coach, Chris Hanson, and assistant coach, Barbie Teller. And then we have, what's listed here is B, the approve of the hiring of Mel Luning for high school language arts, school year 23-24, and she will be put on the tier that's, like Erin explained, what tier, he'll be following that process. And then, another letter C that's on here, I don't know, the lettering got a little wonky, but approval of hiring Nick Schmitz for our high school science teacher for school year All right. So that is a lot on our consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, so I would take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed?
Staying.
Huh?
I'll have to abstain.
Okay. All right, thank you. So that takes us to number 10, discussion and action items. In the policy review, the policy committee met, and we are, we did the second readings on 101, 101.1, 102, 103, and 104. And the change that you probably noticed was that in 104, we added our mission statement from the strategic plan. So that was, that was kind of in the bottom of the listings in all of our handouts. We just took the wording directly off of the strategic plan. So that is the only change we made in that, in those. So I will be looking for a motion to approve the second reading of policy 101, 101.1, 102, 103, and 104.
I'll make a motion to approve 101, 101.1, 102, 103, and 104 for the second reading.
Second?
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And then we also went over the first readings of 201, 202, 203, 203.1, 203.2, 203, 203.5, and 203.6. These are all regarding how the school board operates. They're important ones in our policies, and we follow the policies that we have in writing here. We have been following directly from Minnesota School Board recommendations. So we did not do any changes. The only thing we're going to do over the summer here is we're going to make sure to go through and update all the dates. Like you'll notice at the top, it'll be like revised, or, or, I can't think of the other word, but.
Approval.
The approval, yeah. And so we'll go through now all the ones that we've done through this past year and put the approval date of 2023, so that they're all up to date. Okay, so I, any questions on any of those? Okay, I will look for a motion to approve the first reading of the policies as listed.
Make motion to approve first readings of 201, 202, 203, 203.1, 203.2, 203.5, and 203.6.
Thank you, and second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We do not have any donations at this time. And then you all have a handout list of our graduating class. We have 20 students graduating, and we need to approve the 2023 Independent School District 499 Leroy Ostrander graduation class. So, this is our list, and I would, looking for a motion for the approval of them graduating.
I'll make a motion to approve the 2023 graduating class.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Approval of the resolution for membership into Minnesota State High School League, school year 23-24. Do you want to say anything about that?
This is something we do every year, so I don't think there'll be any question by the board, and this year, and Angie's a part of it actually as clerk, it's all electronic. So that's been kind of nice for us. Normally, it's a lot of pen and paper and scanning and faxing. So thanks, Ann, for helping with this. She was right on it when it came, so.
Yeah, great.
Yes, but I highly recommend we're a part of the.
You change that email on the.
I'll change it when I go in.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it auto-filled, because DF is before DL, so.
Too many D's.
That's why that happened, huh? Okay. So we need to make a motion for the approval of the resolution for membership into the Minnesota State High School League for school year 23-24.
I move we approve the resolution to, for membership in the Minnesota State High School League.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, approval? Yes.
Does it have to be a roll call vote?
Normal resolutions are.
We can do a roll call vote.
It's easy to do.
Okay. We will do a roll call vote on the resolution of the membership to the Minnesota State High School League, school year 22-20, I mean, 23-24. High School League, school year 22, 20, I mean 23, 24. Pat Arndorfer?
Yes.
Lunning?
Yes.
Obern?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Stern?
Yes.
Rayburn?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So now we're moving on to E, approval of the land acquisition by MinDOT for the Highway 56 project.
All right, so as many of you are aware, and with all the emails I've been sending you, you, you probably noted that the small corner of Highway 56 as it turns down onto Leroy Road, MinDOT would like to purchase that from us. We do own it, but it's a really tiny, probably corner, probably about this size for roughly $1,800. But we do need an official motion by the school board. Now this wasn't, earlier we didn't need it, but just on Friday, we received some paperwork that said, oops, we sent you the wrong stuff. Can you please put this on your board agenda for this week and get you approved? So once you approve this tonight, tomorrow I will have one of our office ladies stamp this for me and we will send this off that everything's A-OK by all of you.
Can we add another zero to that?
Right? Yeah, I just added that on there. Just accidentally put that on there.
It's from, it's from 14 and 56, right?
Yes.
I think you might have said 11.
I think I said Leroy Road. That's what I call it, but I don't know if that's right.
But it's, but it's that corner right here where 14 meets 56, okay.
Yep, they want it.
Okay.
They're gonna square that, that corner out. It needs to be.
It does. It's safe. It'll be safer. Yep. Okay, so I am looking for a motion to approve the land acquisition by MinDOT for the Highway 56 project.
I'll make the motion to approve the land acquisition by MinDOT for Highway 6 project.
Thank you, and second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Now you are up for your strategic plan.
Do you want to sit by me or do you want my notes? I think you can hold on.
How many zeros have been behind it? It depends on environment.
It's pretty much it.
Pat, don't fall asleep now, all right? We'll wake you up. Okay, Leroy Ostrander School District Strategic Plan 23 through 28, that's not a typo. Your strategic plan is a five-year plan that, as we've talked about a lot, we, we want to make sure we're reminded of this and we don't stick it up on a shelf collecting dust. Erin and I want to make sure we're active in this plan. So today we want to, we'd like to update the school board a few times a year on the progress made within the ISD 499 strategic plan. Tonight is the first update and I've talked to Chairwoman Rayburn about this. Every few months, and you might not have a large PowerPoint like this every few months, but we will bring it up to you that, hey, maybe we have accomplished goal number three or whatever it is. But we will continue to update you within these five years. And Erin, jump in anytime. So one of the largest parts, of course, of the strategic plan was our kind of recreation of the mission and vision statements. So during the 2022 strategic planning process, a new mission statement and vision statement, which we approved tonight in policy, were created by staff, school board members, administration, and community members. So the first one, our mission statement. The mission of the Leroy Ostrander Public School District is to provide students an education that enhances their potential in all aspects of life. And vision statement, the vision of the Leroy Ostrander Public School District is student success through exceptional education supported by staff, students, families, and the community. So strategic planning is an organizational management activity that is used to set priorities, focus energy and resources, strengthen operations, ensure that employees and other stakeholders are working toward common goals, establish agreement around intended outcomes or results, and assess and adjust the organization's processes. And that's kind of what you see here. Now, those are my words, but that's kind of what I gleaned from a strategic plan and what my experiences have been with strategic planning. But as you can see, kind of strategic planning, and this is from MSBA as well, again, this is annually updated, we want to do it more regularly than that. We just feel with everybody's energies and efforts that went into all those meetings we have, we want to make sure they are in tune to what we're doing here. So we'll do that. So student achievement and support, this is goal one. Achieve the goals of the world's best workforce for all students in the school district. Goal two is students will graduate ready for college careers and the daily tasks of life. So student achievement is no doubt a priority at ISD 499, we know that. To continue to increase student achievement, the school district must align instruction to learning and the standards, include formative assessments throughout the pre-K-12 classrooms, provide consistent feedback, and self-assess regularly. Now, keep in mind too, I went too far here, sorry. The world's best workforce was developed in 2013, so this has been around for a while, folks. It's not something new that legislation, it just came out or Congress just said, hey, we're gonna throw this at you, because they do that quite often, by the way. But this has been since 2013 and there is a statute with it. And I know many of you have seen that. I know particularly Dave and Kyle have because they're on that committee. But it's basically to ensure that school districts and charter schools in Minnesota enhance student achievement through teaching and learning supports. School boards that govern districts and charter schools are required to develop comprehensive long-term strategic plans that address the following five world's best workforce goals. All children are ready for school, and we do have this outlined when we meet, and Angie was a part of it this year too, as a parent, and Jenna was there too. All children are ready for school. All third graders can read at grade level. All racial and economic achievement gaps between students are closed. All students are ready for career in college, and all students graduate from high school. So we do, because legislation tells us we have to have world's best workforce, we already strategically are working on these goals regardless if we have the strategic plan. We have to do this. So just want to kind of mention this quick too, if my cursor will get me there. So basically, in a nutshell, what a world's best workforce strategic plan is as related to a school board strategic plan. It's a multi-year, similar to this, detailed document that illustrates how a school district will execute its goals or initiatives concerning those five goals I mentioned earlier. And then the Minnesota Department of Education, who is kind of our guiding educational body, they recommend that we look at SMART goals. So goals are specific, measurable, attainable, realistic, and timely. A lot of our teachers know what SMART goals are. But anyway, so Kyle, Dave, Angie, Jenna, all saw this wonderful PowerPoint, but this relates directly to what all of you guys do too. I know that was a long one, so bear with me here. Do you want to do this one? No, okay, you won't do it. You won't. Okay, student achievement and support, we're going to continue this. These are the objectives. I won't read them because you already know them. So while the world's best workforce strategic plan is a multi-year strategic roadmap, legislation requires that school districts submit an annual summary report to MDE, and that's what all of this contains. That's that world's best workforce I was talking about. The annual summary report provides details about strategies and local progress toward the five goals I mentioned earlier. Equally important, and again, these are just my narratives, school districts are required to hold annual public stakeholder meetings, which we had here with these folks, on the progress made towards world's best workforce. What'll be nice though, is now we have our school board strategic plan can be implemented in this and we'll have those annual meetings in combination.
School district.
School districts, sorry.
School district.
I can say school board. So it'll be nice because we can collaborate efforts together in one gigantic plan. The meeting, let's see, you guys all know about that. All right, so we're going to move on from that because that's a lot I put in there, I guess. Continuing on with the student achievement and support, our second goal, as it rounds out the objectives, each school creates its own plan to prepare all students for school and align a standards-based curriculum with classroom instruction so that students are career and college ready at graduation. The success of each plan can be measured by using local, by locally using, among other possible data sources such as a kindergarten entry profile or other measures of school readiness, state or local assessments, graduation rates, college entrance exams, and post-secondary outcomes, including employment. So that's what this objective will look like. So community, our next, this is our next kind of umbrella goal, community, communication, outreach, and marketing. This holds goal three and goal four. And as we know, effective communication leads to active participation of the individuals in the community development. We saw that when we drafted this whole plan, the amount of people that wanted to be involved and how they showed up for the meetings, emails were sent, phone calls were had, even with world's best workforce, we have that. When people of a community are closely involved in a communication strategy, it encourages them to take ownership of the initiative of development instead of considering themselves as recipients of the development. We wanted their input. We know that their input is important to what we do. Just because we think a certain course needs to be offered here, we want to ask our students that too. Do they want a course here? Erin and I don't always know, so we want to ask, you know, the kids. So that's one of the examples. Effective communication skills enable people at all levels of the community to work together to achieve the community's goals and move forward on the path of success and development. Effective communication also provides people in the community with information, structure, knowledge, and positive environment in order to feel comfortable managing any kind of conflict or settling issues viably, ultimately leading to a growth of community. And that's what we want to do. So part of our job as administrators and all of you, we're hoping we'll jump in on this, not only do we have our newsletters and send, you know, posts on Facebook and stuff, but we do have that video we want to continue to do. And we want to now start involving more people. Yes, we want to be off camera for a while, but also we think it's really important to have everybody have a voice in this and so they're recognized too. So that'll be part of our, our planning too. Another objective to goal number three, this is a review of existing literature on parental involvement in school districts found that some types of involvement benefit the school directly, telling parents that their involvement and support greatly enhances their children's school progress. So for example, parent-teacher conferences, opening our school up, remember during COVID, we didn't have a lot of folks show up for basketball games and volleyball games. Once that was over, boy, we had parent involvement again. So we want that, we want to open that. Fostering parent involvement from the time that students enter school, teaching parents that they are role models for reading behavior, developing parent programs that are focused on instruction, working to engage parents of disadvantaged students, and emphasizing that parents are partners of the school and the school values their involvement. So we are really diving deep into the research, like in, not only are we saying, oh, what will bring parents in, but in a school district this size and the blue collar workers we have, how do we involve parents? So we're digging deeper into that too, that we're just not going to say, hey, oh, we're going to have a meet and greet with Jen and Erin at 5:00. Well, that's probably not going to work and who wants to talk to Jen and Erin anymore? You know, but we're going to dig deeper into that, that what really would be best for this community. We're not just going to throw something at the wall and hope it sticks. Erin, you can jump in anytime.
I will, I will jump anytime.
Okay. I told you guys last month, it's unlikely he's going to jump in. Community, we're continuing with the objectives, this is goal number four again. So just, just again, throwing out some thoughts here, but communicating clearly and establishing strong relationships with the community are critical school leader responsibilities. So that's all of us sitting here today, as well as our teachers, our support staff, all those folks. Increasingly, leaders find themselves not only responsible to faculty, staff, and students, but also responsible to parents, policymakers, and larger community. So for example, one of the biggest things I'm starting to see now as it's up and coming is Highway 56 project. There's going to be a lot more conversations with our greater community at large about that, and we as a school need to have a voice at the table. So kind of be prepared for that too, all of you. Effective leaders unite these various stakeholders into a cohesive group, moving towards the same quality goals, educating children, and raising student performance. Parents, guardians, students, and stakeholders are the integral component of a school district community. They are the ones who develop a community and make it successful, thus it's very important that their needs and concerns must be discussed in order to develop a healthy community. And we want to make sure we have the appropriate avenues in place, that if there are concerns, you know, for example, our hierarchy of communication, you know, that you as a board are bombarded with classroom issues. That starts with the teacher, then it goes to Erin, then it goes to me, then it goes to the board, however it may be. So we're trying to, as much as we can, put that information out there in a professional way, but also an easy way for our parents to come meet and greet us or any community member. They don't even have to be parents. Okay, leadership. Leadership is the ability of an individual or a group of people to influence and guide followers or members of an organization, society, or team. Leadership is often an attribute tied to a person's title, seniority, or ranking in a hierarchy. Leadership is about taking risks and challenging the status quo. Leaders motivate others to achieve something new and better. While some people might naturally be drawn to management roles, good leadership is a combination of skills that anyone can master. Some of these skills may include strategic thinking, delegation, communication, integrity, empathy, flexibility, and enthusiasm. So what's nice is what we're doing here, we are allowing our staff, so yes, we may have the title that really relates to leadership, all of us sitting here tonight, but keep in mind, our teachers have that. A lot of our student organizations have that. We have, it's already built in, for example, we have captains of the football team, captains of the basketball team. Erin has developed a leadership council with our students, you know, those are all great things that we need to continue to enhance in terms of this particular goal for us. Leadership continued, so the objectives 5.1 and 2. The importance of stakeholder management in leadership is to ensure that all stakeholders have a common understanding of the goals and objectives of the organization and that they can work together to achieve these goals. So that's what I said earlier, we aren't going to put this on the shelf, folks. We're not going to talk about this, we're going to talk about the things we're doing, the actions we're taking, the decisions we're making. We have nothing to hide, so we do, we want to talk about some of these things. Leaders must also be able to identify and manage potential conflict between stakeholders. That happens often in Erin and my office. Even, you know, today, there was some conflict that we resolved right away, but, but it happens a lot and we have to do, we have to be out front with things, we have to, yes, sometimes have the hard conversations, as many of you are a part of as well, and that's what we do. Stakeholder engagement helps organizations to proactively consider the needs and desires of anyone who, oh, I lost my mouse just a minute, it's stuck over here. Uh-oh. Never mind, we're moving on. Anyway, you know where I was going with that. Okay. So objective or goal, the objectives of goal number six, 6.1, starting immediately, all stakeholders will follow the chain of command in all situations. In your Friday email this week, you will be getting our, it's all color-coded, all that, I'll resend it to all of you because I don't think our new members have ever received it, so I'll resend it. It is on our website, but basically it's a chain of command is a ladder of authority where those in charge of an organization or company direct and control employees below them within the hierarchy. Chain of command details how junior employees should report to and when to consult a figure of authority. So again, like I said earlier, we want, not only is this about decision-making, but it's also about communicating too, and the importance of all of us knowing our roles and the importance of each of our roles. For example, Erin and I can't be the school board. We need you to be school board members. We need you to take your role seriously. We need you to know your roles, just like you should expect, hey Jen, I can't be your, I can't be this, if Deborah were to say to me, Jen, I'm not the superintendent, that's your role, I need to take that very seriously, that absolutely, that's what I'm hired for. And so that's what this kind of is about. So I'll get that to you on Friday. Some of you have already seen it, but a couple of you haven't. Wow. Okay, we're going to go on to 14. Leadership goal, or this is objective 7.1, during the spring of 2023, create a professional development plan for all levels of leadership. So leadership and professional development unlocks values at all levels. So once you start developing leadership, like all of you went through a strategic planning, Erin was just at an amazing Marzano Teacher Evaluation Conference, so once we start doing that, guess what? It trickles to everybody else throughout your organization. Oftentimes, we do have staff members. throughout your organization. Oftentimes, we do have staff members come to you and present on what they've recently learned, and we'll continue to do that. So for the individual, this means honing their skills, learning new tools, and growing as a professional, whether that means focusing on leadership or broadening and develop capabilities in their career. As individuals develop, organizations flourish. Professional development also provides, again, the greater good, the greater good, that we just don't want to send somebody off on professional development, whether it's any of you, or Erin, or I, or teaching staff, whoever it may be, and they come back and just use it for themselves. It has to be spread throughout our district. That's not only fiscally responsible, but it's going to do the most good of our pre-K-12 students. We want that. All right, facilities. This is always a nice hot topic. We just had our building grounds and safety meetings tonight. We put on a good mile of walking around, so we got our exercise in today. Facilities are maintained and improved to enhance learning. Throughout the course of the year, you do receive our long-term facilities document. I am going to update that now after this meeting, and I'll get that off to the board here in the next couple of weeks too, so you'll get it again. But facilities, operations, and maintenance encompasses a broad spectrum of services. Again, these are just my words. Many of you have other things you can add to this. Competencies, processes, and tools required to assure the built environment will perform the functions for which a facility was designed and constructed. Facility maintenance is any technical task required to ensure or restore an organization's physical environment, operation, quality, and safety. Now, keep in mind, we did add safety to that. Granted, this says facilities, but keep in mind, the overall general view of most educators feels safety should be incorporated into this as well. So a facilities plan establishes a framework for orderly growth and development of capital improvements on a school district's campus, should be responsive to an institution's current and projected needs, and sufficiently flexible to accommodate changes that could be expected to occur, you know, like LTFM dollars. We don't know ever what the state is going to do with that. Remember, they changed and split it years ago. It was LTFM versus safety, health and safety. Now they're kind of combined. We don't know when that could happen. So we do have to be very flexible with that. A facility plan is typically a document that guides our decision-making processes for future investments on facility enhancements, any new construction, demolition, anything like that. As a matter of fact, tonight, we're, or tonight at our building grounds and safety committee meeting, we did talk about our LTFM plan, that all of you see that spreadsheet. We may want to enhance that. Amanda brought up a good idea, hey, maybe we need to split it out and prioritize it as, prioritize safety issues versus cosmetic issues versus brick and mortar issues, you know? So it's something we need to look at and grow from. So we're looking at that too. So we're moving ahead on these facility plannings for sure. And we've tackled some pretty major things. When you look at that document, in the last three years, we've tackled some pretty good things. So, but please take a look at and ask questions too. While we're coming to the end, Erin, did I miss anything, or do you want to add?
Oh, you were awesome.
He was poking me with. But no, I mean, there's plenty more, and I have a lot more, of course, notes, like I want to talk about preschool, preschool plus, our ninth grade careers class, kids going to the SMEC Career Expo tomorrow, some of our supports that we're doing for kids, whether it's SED, Title I, tutoring, targeted services, our Reading Core, our before and after-school C-time, that's all things we will eventually bring up to you. But I just wanted to give you, and Erin did too tonight, just a real general overview, kind of our philosophy on what maybe you're expecting as well with this strategic plan from us. So those were my words, Erin's words tonight, that we wanted to share with you, and let us know if we're way off base, but otherwise, we're just going to keep coming forward to giving you more information as we go, if that sounds all right.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. All right. Did anyone have any questions for Jenna?
She's going to spoil us. We're going to expect the PowerPoint every time.
Right? I like, I do like Billy Power Point.
It keeps us focused.
Do you want me to do a PowerPoint?
Okay, so now, gee, we're going to talk about school board committees. So the community ed is our first committee, Community Ed ECFE, and what I wanted to tell you, Kate Rohr is the coordinator of community ed. Community ed includes all the classes that we see as like community ed classes, also includes ECFE, Cardinal Kids, Cardinal Care, and the summer rec program. So that's all housed under the community ed. And she, we were talking a little bit about ECFE, and I believe we're still keeping out there, hoping for, looking for an ECFE director. Tanya, Amy, and Ryan took care of it this year, but we're still looking for someone who would be able to do that job. With ECFE, they did have really fun spring activity called Touch a Truck. They had about 16 vehicles and about 135 adults and kids attended and really enjoyed that. She did receive funding for summer school, not as extensive, for summer preschool. This is the preschool section. She did receive some funding for summer preschool, not the extent that happened during COVID, but still an amount so that she can have some summer programming. With that, and classes were very well attended. Soccer had so many people, they had to split into two different fields. So she's looking for anybody who is interested in teaching soccer next year, because it's really become something fun that kids have enjoyed. They have lots of classes in May here, acting up, after-school swim, braiding and hairstyling, kite flying, May baskets, again, the soccer and taekwondo. And there are lots of summer rec activities, including T-ball, beginning baseball, Pee-wee, pickleball, bucket drumming, taekwondo, and camps, including football camp, basketball camp, volleyball, theater, and dance camp. So there's a lot going on with the community ed right now. And then meet and confer, we were all at that. Do you guys want to say anything about that?
We had a.
Kind of laid down the ground rules.
Right, right. We had a three-point agenda. It was pretty small, because we were just getting going again. There's four teachers on it and three board members. And like you said, we set up the guidelines. Chrissy Schuman presented some findings that she had done some research, so we kind of had some guidelines to follow. We reviewed our purpose, set up our next date, talked about how Jen and Erin were going to present on the strategic plan, and that we would utilize that as information. We're going to try to revisit something about the strategic plan every time we meet with meet and confer. We talked about confidentiality within the context of the fact that it's an open meeting, but that we're confidential about, like, we're not going to leave the meeting and say so-and-so said this and so-and-so said that. So that level of confidentiality, but it is an open meeting that people can attend at any time, and to focus on solutions, which I thought was great. Chrissy brought that up. Okay. MSBA, David's not here. Minnesota State High School League.
Nothing, we just joined.
We just joined. We just joined, okay. Scholarship?
Selections next week.
Selections next week, okay. Certified negotiations?
We'll be meeting our first time.
25th?
And that'll basically be just setting the ground rules for upcoming meetings as well.
Okay, all right. Non-certified, nothing happening with that right now. SMEC, did you have a meeting?
Actually, we have a special meeting tomorrow night to talk about, I think, insurance and a building issue, and then the regular meeting's the 31st.
Okay. District policy review, we did during the meeting, so we don't need to work at that. Anything on world's best workforce? Anything new? Buildings and grounds?
We met tonight, actually, as Jen mentioned, and we did a walk-through. I guess we didn't touch every single area, but we went clear out to the football field and looked at that. I think we talked about that maybe last month, some of the issues with that. So there's a few things that we're looking at prioritizing. One would be that football field, to get that grass down the center that repaired and in decent shape before fall. Carpeting down here at the elementary, this ramp area that goes up the elementary, try to keep that from being slippery. There's some electrical issues that I don't know how to explain that, other than there's, that's causing the flickering of the lights in the main office and those kind of things. So that needs to get taken care of.
Dripping the breaker for the copier.
Yep.
In the office.
Windows, there's the windows along the locker rooms, and then the windows up here that had not been replaced back when all the rest of the classroom windows were. We want to try to prioritize that, because there's broken glass, there's, there's broken screens, and you can see around the edges through there. So anyway, that needs to be prioritized. The safety film on the front doors, we're going to be doing that. That came in at $1,600, I think, so not a terrible price, but that'll, that'll add some element of safety, plus I think it'll look kind of cool, too. So. We, just a reminder that we have the second half of the LED lighting project to pay for this, this year, or this, so, because we put that over two years. So that's all LTFM. And by walking around, we need to get some tuck pointing done around the building, and that's kind of an ongoing project. But don't have numbers on everything for you guys. The committee didn't really vote to recommend anything, but those are just some of the projects we're looking at.
Okay.
There's a lot of things. You know, there's a list as long as your arm, and it's like, where do you, where do you start, or where do you stop? I mean, it's like, so.
Right, right. Okay, thank you. And then the Maurer County Collaborative, I did attend a viewing of a documentary on resilience, and there was a conversation about that. It was attended by many people in Austin, and all the different schools were invited to attend. And I've talked with Jen a little bit about the possibility of some different ways that we can incorporate this into some of the teacher training that we were talking about, and maybe something with some parenting. Anyway, it's a big thrust in the state of Minnesota to be a part of this resiliency training, and that resiliency, you know, helps us if we've been through something hard, like COVID, you know, for a lot of people, or that it also helps us to be able to move forward when we're faced with something hard. So just, just staying that, the Maurer County Collaborative is really helping to promote this. So that's what I have on that committee. All right, anything else? All right. Calendar updates, as Jen mentioned, May 26 is high school graduation. Is that 7:00 PM? Is that correct? Okay. And there's Memorial Day, Staff Development and Work Day, and then you'll notice here on June 13, District Policy Committee meeting, that's actually meeting at 10:00 AM, rather than the regular 3:15, since the teachers are not in school. And June 20 will be our next board meeting. All right, motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Sorry, don't want to seem too.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I gave it to Dave Lenning, Pat Arndt, or Dave Lenning. 7:05.